So, I want to thank everybody who came there today. I appreciate the interest in the budget and your county. It's very important that everybody, taxpayers, come see what your money is going for. So, I hope we have some explanation for you here today and answer some questions you might have. I'd like to thank all of y'all for being here today. I'm going to give out all the permissions. If you have any questions at the end, please ask. I'm not prepared to answer whatever you got. I think we'll come to an understanding here. It's a difficult year, I'm going to be honest with you. You know, we're transitioning from a time when it, we kind of just got by to get on a little something better, you know? And a lot of times, a little better doesn't cost the same as it is. But I think we'll go through and explain this right here. When I started looking at this, I said, "Okay, what I want to do is I want to understand your job." Because it's important for me to understand what your responsibilities are so that I make sure that I'm being fair. I don't want, I'm fair-minded. I don't want to be unfair to you as commissioners and put you in a position that you can't perform your duties after prescribed by law. So, I looked at your training manual, the ACCG Training Manual, Constitution Officers, Budget and Contracting, Those Three Issues. This basically tells you as commissioners what your responsibilities are, what your limitations are, and then what you have to do and what you can't do. And so, I looked at this, and the specific ones I looked at was talking about the budget. And the budget, in county government, there's two different kinds of people. You have departments that the county commissioners are over. They have a wide range of abilities to control them, their budget, much more so than constitutional officers. On constitutional officers, basically, they hold a pocketbook for our jobs. We make the decisions, but we have to come and walk the narrow line to understand that we're being fair. But at the end of the day, their obligation as commissioners is to fund the job I have to do. My responsibility as a sheriff is to show what I'm asking for is fair and necessary. Because for both of us, I have a duty to protect the taxpayers, and they have a duty to protect the taxpayer's money. So, we have to be, have a partnership here where we work together on this. And it's not what the answer do, you say, "Hey, here's what I want to do." Now, at the end of this cremation, my responsibility is to make sure they understand what I say I need, I need. And also, the money I've already spent was necessary to spend to accomplish what I am required to do. So, that's what we're going through there. And see the bottom, how kind of italicized it. It says, "County officers are independent elected officials. A sheriff is a county official. As such, they are not employees of commissioners and not subject to supervision by commissioners. County officers are charged by law to perform their duties and depend upon the county commissioners to adequately fund them." So, that means that I got to do what I'm required to do by law, and they have to fund me so I can do my job. They don't have to give you more money than I need to do the job, just what I need to do the job, and that's it. So, it's a matter of, I have to provide for my needs and what's necessary, not what I want. So, I can make sure that I can justify what I need. While I'm not obligated to give county officers whatever they claim to need, county commissioners are charged by law to properly fund the county officers. Next page is how much is enough? That's a big question. How much is enough? You know? And this is the question that we struggle with because people have different opinions about how much is enough? What are you looking for? Why is that necessary? And basically, the standard is, a lot of times, I tell them why I need what I need. And they may not agree with what I'm saying, but if it's reasonable, they have to fund it. They can't arbitrarily cut it if I can show the need for it. However, it's my responsibility to show the need. Now, I can't show the need, they can't cut it, and that's the answer to it. So, basically, if I can't show where I need a certain number of positions, or I don't need this for something else, they don't have to fund it. That's their side. So, both of us have a responsibility here. They try to do it for as cheap as possible, and I try to do it as right as possible. And somewhere in the middle, we need to come to a conclusion that we need to take care of the taxpayers on this, and that's what you try to do. Overpaying the budget. I mean, this question came up in the last meeting. When you overspend the budget, and I knew I was going to overspend the budget this year. It's very simple because when you do something right, it costs more than doing it wrong. That's just the way it is. So, the first thing that I recommend is talk with the county officer to find a way to help him or her come into compliance. Now, I've talked to every single one of these commissioners, and I actually made a book with numbers for every single one of them, and all of them had them except for Andy Saxon because he's been busy on a farm, and I understand he's a big man, so I don't hold against it, but we did talk. I'm not here blowing money for no reason. You know, I want to be in compliance. I want to be in the budget, but I want to make sure the budget's reasonable, and that's what the discussion's about. That's why number two is be open to legitimate deeds of county officers and make justifying amendment. So, that's a lot what this is. This budget meeting is for me to make my case for why what I'm asking for is legitimate and reasonable. They can do nothing. They can engage in a battle in the press, and that makes everybody look bad. They can educate the public through reports and audits, and this is actually a part of that, to be honest with you, because you come here and we look at numbers, and the public can come, so you are being educated while you're at this meeting. The last one's a mandamus. And a mandamus is a lose-lose for everybody. Basically, what a mandamus is, is you're saying, "Hey, we can't work this out among you, so let's take it to Superior Court and let the judge decide." And basically, he looks at the facts. And a mandamus can go either way. If they feel like I need to stop spending money, they can petition the judge to do that. On the same side, the judge can also say they have to fund what I'm asking for. But the problem with that is, the county pays for attorneys for both sides, so really the attorney's on the witness. So, hopefully, I don't want to get to that. I think we're all developed, and we can come to a consensus. So, what I'm looking at for, there's four basic things here that we need to resolve today. Were the duties and responsibilities of sheriff's office being satisfied of the previous budget administration? Well, that's important. I'm being prepared to the previous budget. He did it for this, why can't you do it for this? Well, that's important because the question is, what's he doing for this? Because if I'm being held to a standard, and I'm getting more than the previous administration did, you're talking apples and oranges. So, we're going to talk about that a little bit. Are the staffing levels reasonable to accomplish these duties? And is there funding to hire the necessary staff currently? Is there money in this budget this year to hire the people I need to do the job I'm required to do by law? We'll talk about that. Is it adequate to hire and retain employees in comparison to the job market in the area? And that's one of these things where you, we'll look at that, and we'll look at what everybody makes. And we'll talk about it because if you have a piece of paper and it has eight dollars an hour on it, it might as well be two dollars an hour because you're not going to hire anybody that's a good legitimate law enforcement officer for that amount of money. And I'm not saying that's the case, but just as an exaggerated example. And last is, was the cost of transition reasonable? And was the money spent necessary to bring the organization up to reasonable standards? Did I waste money during the transition? That's what I have to explain to everyone of these people out here and everyone of taxpayers in this room. I'm held to the same standard because I'm spending public money, so it needs to be spent well, and I have to justify that to any person, and we'll do that. Primary duties of sheriff. Most time, people think you're sitting around, and the deputies just wait for a call to come in. If you get a call, you go handle the call. That's your job. That's not our job. We have a huge job. Our job is enormous. We do answer calls for service. You're also required to try to serve warrants and processes. You also have to make sure that you go out and keep the P's in different places and things like that, do proactive patrols, do traffic enforcement. There's an enormous amount of stuff we do as sheriffs. There's no other police departments in this county. We're it. So, we don't do it, nobody does it. The courts, we're responsible to make sure that courthouse security is taken care of. And this courthouse we have is incredibly difficult to secure because it's all historic and it's beautiful, but it's got too many exits and really hard security. But we're still required to secure it to the best of our ability and our law, and we try to do that by closing off certain exits and blocking off certain ways so we funnel people, so we can actually monitor that with less people as the goal. Try to have a mild number of people that have a secure courthouse in court. And the jail. Jail's a big deal. When you're taking care of other people and they can't do it themselves, they require you to do it for them. And if you want to think about getting sued, the jail's where you can sue that. I'm just going to tell you, they can sue you for almost anything. There's certain standards, there's federal regulations, and other things you have to abide by. So, when you look at that, you got to really think about what you're doing. In addition, these are additional mandated duties by law. I'll go through here. We have to approve rattle. I'll just hit a couple of big highlights. We've got to take care of levees, byfae, things like that. You know, child abuse protocol committee. We have to impound any livestock running at larger range. If your cow's out, it's the sheriff's office's responsibility to get the cattle. By law, we have to go get it. Same for the deer, sheep, or either livestock. And if we do that, we actually charge you thirty-five for that dollar a day until we find the owner. If we can't find the owner, we actually can get the animals handed over to us in court, and we can sell them, recoup our costs. A little interesting tidbit. Very happy for Old Oak County. There's some more. These are all mandated by law. These are all things we're required to do, and people don't think about all this. I'll tell you something. What did you pay for last year and wasn't job being done? Now, I'm going to tell you, I don't like talking bad about anybody. Anybody knows me knows I don't like to badmouth anybody. But this is the proper venue and proper place for truth to come out. I'm just going to tell you, because you need to know what you paid for. Deputies were instructed by administrators not to write tickets, and if they did, the ticket books were taken. They told them to avoid certain drug areas by name. You stay out of here, or you're here. They told them not to arrest certain people with warrants, and you had to call before you served a child support warrant to get permission. They actively interfered investigations. If you got in certain places, they'd call you on the phone, say, "You go ten days, get back in service. Leave that alone." And they had a saying, "If you want to get in trouble, do your job." Now, I got plenty of deputies that will take, make sworn depositions that this is the truth, and I believe it is, because I can see the after effects of it. So, when I see this, the amount of money you paid last year to job was not being done. So, if you compare me to last year, it's unfair because I'm doing the job. This is like taking your car to get the oil changed and somebody wiping the filter off clean to tell you the oil's changed. It looked like it was changed. There's people riding around the car with badges and guns, but the job wasn't being done. Job's deeper than that, but on the surface, it looked like it was. If you don't look at the difference, on the left is the evidence room before, and the right is the evidence room after. And I think that speaks for itself. That's the job you got. Under Georgia law fifteen twenty-one ninety-five, about ten percent of fines goes towards a jail construction or jail maintenance fund. Those funds are used exclusively, and the commissioners hold this. This is a separate fund outside my budget. This is a whole separate account. This fund is exclusively used to repair and staff and construct jails. That money can be used for nothing else in the county but this. And going through, looking at that, that money fills up over the years. In addition, seventy to eighty thousand dollars was spent out of that account to try to get the jail back to a serviceable condition. Now, this is not in my budget. This is seventy to eighty thousand additional dollars that was spent out there to try to get things right. The county's government authority controls the fund, but the money can only be used and spent on the needs of the jail. So, the county chairman administers that, and he says, "Okay, I see a need for this. Let's fix this." But it's only used for the jail, nothing else. This money can't be used anywhere else. Not all the repairs and updates that were needed were completed due to fund, they would be exhausted. We spent almost all the money in, and it still wasn't fixed. I had to go into general budget and take things out of general budget to continue some of the things we need to fix out there. Jail must be run in a constitutionally responsible manner and meet federal guidelines and standards. There is very well-stated case law on what's allowable and not allowable in jail. If you want to see a gold standard in the jail, you don't want to mess up in it. You want to do it halfway. There's standards for everything. Standards for going down the yard. At the jail, I think people had to give a yard call almost six months for every inmate, if that's a possible lawsuit, for every week that went by without yard duty. Where they got to go outside and see the sky, I think is the way it's framed. And there are several other things in there. The second day I was down there, we had a mutiny in Deep Pod. People refused to lock down. Went back there, both the upper and lower shower were not fixed. And it's not the fault of anybody in the road department or anybody in county. They just weren't asked to come fix stuff. They had no clue, I don't think, how bad that jail was. We actually had a portion of the ceiling that was falling in. That got fixed in the first couple of days. So, it was in atrocious shape, but it was still funded on the same, the same budget. Get some pictures for me. Do you see the rust stains and the water leaks going on the wall? Do you see the positions on the other things? Pictures are better in color. It was not in good shape. Pictures tell it all. Can't see it too good, but behind the sink there, that's black mold in the kitchen. That's not good. You wouldn't want to have black mold in your house. That's basically the lawsuit system right there. What we did is, our maintenance people actually came in and put in a piece of stainless steel and put it behind there so that it could properly keep that black mold from growing. So, that's been fixed. On the right, that's the Sally Court Room. It was just basically a catch-all room that had a bunch of junk in it, a bunch of broken furniture and everything else, and a truck piece hung out in there. This is a dumpster that we had brought in. That dumpster was woody filled with broken furniture. The box container to the right, it had twelve to fifteen-year-old evidence in it that hadn't been used. And out by the green dumpster right there, there was evidence that was stored outside, bicycles and stuff like that that were stored outside. We had to throw them away because the paper tags on the bicycles had faded out from being in the rain and the weather, so we had no clue what evidence that went to issue. We had to take care of that. In addition, I'm not even touching on dispatch, but dispatch is in bad shape. I don't know if y'all know this or not, but the last time we got audited by DCIC, we failed our audit pretty badly. We were supposed to do a self-audit and fix the things, and they weren't fixed, none of them worked. I found a stack of almost ten inches deep of TPOs that had not been thrown to the computer. So, if somebody had a TPO, which is a temporary protective word, which is designed to protect that person from a dangerous situation, they definitely got to whip them, called in on the radio, that TPO was not listed on the computer. So, they wouldn't have done anything unless they got to go. And that's a major violation, a major, major violation. We had a bunch of other things in the warrant section and stuff that weren't done, and I think it's been an enormous amount of time trying to get that right. They came back, we got audited in March. We had six issues, you know, those six issues that all were fixed. You can't go back and fix it once it's done, but they acknowledged the fact on that, and we passed it. We passed our DCIC, no fines, no censorship on our DCIC. So, that's a good thing. But you have to put the work in to do that, and folks in Iowa One really did a lot of work to get it right and get it where it's supposed to be. Looking at our nine-year crime trends, well, the nine-year average were forty-seven percent below on burglary, forty-five percent below on larcenies, which is thefts. DUI is up four hundred and thirty-six percent. And this was last month. We're actually above that now. I was talking to the captain from GSP, and we have actually done as many DUIs in this county as GSP's entire post has done in Washington with seven full-time troopers. So, I think we're doing pretty good. You know, we're serious about making roads safer here. Same thing, citations, two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven, and accidents are up, and the reason accidents are up is we're working the rest. These are reports that Old Oak County Sheriff's Office is writing. Instead of waiting forty-five minutes, an hour for GSP troops to get here and work it, we'll work it because our aim is to get citizens back on the road and back on where they need to go. Instead of waiting for somebody else to come work the rest, we already do it.
I know I asked you this earlier today, but like on the citation, is that twenty-two hundred and twenty-seven actual or that extrapolated for the whole year? Is that?
No, that's just for the six months.
But that's four hundred for all of last year?
Yes. No, that's all around the same time last year.
You can reasonably expect forty-four, oh, same time last year?
Yes, these are all same time through June. These are apples to apples, apples to apples comparisons. So, through June, four hundred, through June, this year, two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven through June. And what you're going to find is, you probably have more citations the second half of the year because that's party season. People go Thanksgiving, people go Christmas, football season's coming up, and if you don't see DUIs, go other weeks of football season. And I'm going to tell you right now, we're going to do road checks of football game on game days. No surprise there. If I can tell you we're doing a road check that keeps you from driving drunk, that's better catching. I'm just going to tell you. So, basically, what that was for was to establish you didn't get your money's worth last year. And why is that important? Well, it's cheaper not to go watch. If you don't make cases, you don't go to court, you don't need fingerprint powder, you don't need evidence bag, you don't need cameras, you don't need all this stuff, and another thing, if you're not worried about proactively patrolling the county, you can put one or two people out here, catch a call here and there, and be fine. But you're not going to affect crime. You're not going to proactively affect drugs and all those kind of things because all you're doing is acting, you're just going when you're called. That's not what police work is. That's a fraction of what police work is. That's just doing what's necessary. You know, that's doing the base of this, "You call me, I'll come. If we have somebody, we'll send them." Now, I'm going to talk about staffing. There's two real deputy positions in question. If you look on the first page in your book, that white part, I got that last November, and that was the payroll for the sheriff's office. And I was trying to determine, how many people should I have? How many were you supposed to have? Because I know they were short because they couldn't hire people. According to that, there was nine deputy positions on the road and four supervisors. So, my thought process is, okay, I'll hire eight deputies on the road and four supervisors, and that way, I'll be one hundred. And that's what I did. I have twelve full deputies for the road now. So, I didn't create any positions. Those positions were there last year. They're on the list, they're on payroll last year. That's not something I made up. I just feel like they're there. The question is, are they necessary? And I'm going to contend they are necessary as evidence, through staffing formulas, observing the ability of available deputies to respond to calls for service. I would really like for you to come out with Rattle sometime in the afternoons and see how busy it is, and how many calls you're running from one to the other on, and then how many calls have to wait because we don't have the people to send. And if you want to know if you're adequate staff, that's what you look at. If you have to sit there and you've got two or three calls holding in a small cannon like this, you're understaffed, and I'll tell you, we are. The other part, issue with that is, if you're just running from call to call, you don't have any time to go out and proactively work on drugs. You don't have time to proactively go out. We get tips sometimes, hey, they're selling drugs down here. We got them by the center. You know, we simply don't. We try to present like we have a lot more people. We do, we do that through the way we staff people. We don't have block staffing. We try to staff during the call volume. That's why we have twelve-hour shifts, eight-hour shifts, and ten-hour shifts. And what we'll try to do is layer the shifts so that the most people working here are the highest call volumes. And hopefully, that gives the shortest response times, the best response to these citizens, and also some of the time hopefully built in there to actually do something proactive and get people to focus on stuff they shouldn't be doing. The other question is about staffing. Grand jury has consistently recommended an increase in manpower ever since two thousand and ten, as far as I'm aware of that. Sheriff does not have to have approval for positions, only show the need. And that's, the reason I show the need is the need is to fund you. I give you positions by you giving me the money to hire people. When you cut my money, you effectively cut my ability to hire people. So, you kind of do control who I hire and don't hire by the money I have. That's the issue. These are grand jury recommendations in their own words. In May two thousand and ten, more deputies should be on patrol during each shift. And these are taxpayers who get selected for jury duty, who serves on the grand jury. These are normal citizens, and they're going through and looking at this as their work, as citizens of this county. Two thousand and eleven, more deputies should be on patrol during each shift. Two thousand and twelve, hire two part-time and two full-time deputies. Two thousand and thirteen, funding to hire additional full-time deputies. Two thousand and fifteen, additional funds so as to increase the number of deputy patrol officers. Two thousand and fifteen, November, recommend the sheriff's office to allocate more budget funds, storages, additional deputies if needed. And why I look at this is telling me that the taxpayers want better coverage. They want law enforcement this year. Staffing formulas, I got three here. The first one's International Association of Chiefs of Police. Their recommendation is two deputies per thousand residents. That comes out to twenty-nine point eight. In my opinion, that's a little high, just being honest with you. The US Census says in sheriff's offices that averages one point four deputies per thousand residents. That comes out to twenty point eight eight deputies. The reason that's the average is because that's what works. These sheriff's offices have also done the formulas and then extrapolated what works as large response as that, and about one point four deputies per thousand is about the number. But just to make sure, I actually had our actual call volume and our numbers sent to a crime analyst, and he put it through a workload analysis for staffing. And basically, what they say is, it's a rule of thirds. And a rule of thirds is, you should spend a third of your time responding to calls for service. And that's, you know, if somebody's breaking in my house, I need to go do a funeral escort, you don't have a choice what you do. You should spend a third of your time on administrative duties, and that includes your lunch break, that includes going through and having time to write reports and things like that. You should spend a third of your time on proactive duties. Proactive duties include writing tickets for citations, pursuing drug offenders and things like that, drug cell areas, but it also includes community-oriented policing, going in schools and talking to kids, and proactively getting out in the community. And it calls a rule of thirds, and that's what they go off of. And the recommendation is eighteen point six eight deputies. That's not around eighteen. What they're saying is, with this call volume, this is the number of deputies you should have to adequately service, serve the public. Now, the issue that is, because I'm not asking for eighteen deputies. I have twelve deputies, I just want to fund it. That's it. I'm not asking for more. Just giving you the money for what I have. That's all maximum. I feel like that's reasonable. I feel like that's, we've shown what we can do with twelve deputies. And even right now, with twelve deputies, sometimes it's not enough, but I'm going to work with it. I don't want to cost taxpayers more money than I have to, but I do want to be able to do my job. And twelve deputies, I can pretty well perform that job. Looking at salaries, this is an issue. Payroll when coming into office, they had those extra two positions you saw on a piece of paper. If I didn't change a single thing, exactly, everything stayed the same, and those two vacant positions were filled, the actual payroll would have been six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and two hundred and four, six hundred and seventy-one thousand and two hundred and four dollars and forty-two cents. There was only six hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted. This tells me that those two positions were not budgeted for, but are necessary. And I guarantee it isn't necessary. So, that's starting out with fifty-one thousand, two hundred and four dollars and forty-two cents deficit to budget, just because the two positions are not paid for. That's not over spending, that's under budget. We also have hidden costs in the payroll. Now, Old Oak County, they pay for holidays. And basically, what happens is, paying holidays are a good idea for administrative and people who work in offices and stuff. So, like if you had somebody that worked in the tax commissioner's office, on a holiday, you just lock the doors, you close it, you go home, and you still get paid for it. It does not affect your payroll because you just don't work that day, but you still make the same amount of money every year. That does not work for public safety employees. When you're talking about shift work, if I have somebody working that day, they're already scheduled to work, you know, eighty-four point five hours in a two-week period. So, now they're getting paid eight hours on top of that eighty-four point five. But I can't give them time off because I need them to work because I'm already working short. You can't, you know, you can't adjust everybody else for a holiday. I don't have enough people to do that. So, you end up paying ten holidays, eighty additional hours for every employee. That money was not budgeted. If you take what was made, what was in the budget last year, and you look at what salaries, if that money comes out of the salaries pay line, the money is not there. And that's to the two hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. I can't change that, that's a county policy. Now, what I would like to do is, I would like to bank hours instead of being paid. And what that means is, if you could take, when somebody gets some holidays on shift work for public safety, instead of paying them eight hours, I would like them to be able to bank the number of hours they actually worked. So if you work a twelve-hour shift, you bank twelve hours, and then sometime within the next year, you have to use that twelve hours like a vacation day. If one person takes a day off, I can cover that shift, not pay anybody overtime, and it doesn't affect their overall budget, because the payroll's the same. Because I had already counted on paying that person for that day. He's just taking the day off, just like the office person is. It just works a little different. So, uh, if we can get that changed, that would, that was tremendous.